Thanks Dave. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the municipality of Trent Hills Public Hearings Public Meetings for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. This public hearings, public meetings being held by electronic participation pursuant to the ministry's procedural bylaw. Number 2021-040 and section 238 subsection 3.1 of the municipal act as amended. The meeting will be live streamed on municipalities meeting portal and YouTube channel. The video recording will be uploaded to the municipality of Trent Hills website following the meeting. Call the meeting to order at 6:03. We'll go for approval of the agenda. Motion reads it's recommended that the agenda for the public hearing hearings, public meetings. And the meeting of February 1st, 2022, we received and approved. A mover and seconder, please. I rec second by Gene. All in favor?
Your worship recorded vote?
Oh, yeah. I got everybody put their hand up. You call the vote, please Doug.
Councillor English?
Yes.
Councillor Keller, her McLennan is absent. Deputy Mayor Metcalf?
Yes.
Councillor Redden?
Yes.
Councillor Tully?
Yes.
Councillor Bratney?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Carried by six, your worship.
Thank you very much. Is there any disclosure of interest?
I'm sorry, Richard.
Thanks Doug. Seeing none. These, these public hearings and public meetings are being held in accordance with the provisions of the planning act. The purpose of the meeting is for council members to formally hear and receive public and agency comments. The intent of the statutory public hearings and public meetings. Is to receive public feedback and incorporate it into a recommendation report from staff. No decisions will be made during this meeting. Please be advised the meeting is being recorded for the purposes of creating a public record. Any property owner may file an application under the planning act relating to their property. The purpose of the public process in filing an application is to determine if the proposal is supported by local and provincial land use policies. The process also seeks public input in order to determine if any issues identified have been or can be addressed. The applicants or agents will be given an opportunity to speak on behalf of their submission and to respond to questions arising from the discussion of these applications. Interested members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition to the application being dealt with. At this hearing and meeting. All persons addressing council must state their full name and address and must direct their comments through the chair. Any information you provide at a public hearing, public meeting may be disclosed in a public record. If you missed the live meeting, have technical, technical issues or prefer to submit comments following the public hearing. You may email your comments to planning@trenthills.ca. That is all lowercase and again, it's planning@trenthills.ca. The municipality requires these comments no later than seven days after this meeting to ensure the comments can be reviewed by planning staff. Prior to preparation. Recommendation report to be heard at a future council meeting. As a reminder to individuals attending the meeting, please turn off your video and mute your microphone until staff has concluded presenting the application you wish to speak to. Turn on your video when you wish to speak to the application to ensure you are visible to the chair. Unmute your microphone when you are speaking. Once your items are completed, you may leave the meeting. If you are watching the live stream and have unmuted your microphone to speak, please close the live stream browser window. As there will be an audio feedback that will cause a delayed echo effect. Okay, going forward to the first severance consent application, which is B01. 2022 for 108 7086 Ontario Inc. Berardo Masacoli Timber Lane Drive concession 14 part of lot 10, former township of Seymour. Jim or is it Liz?
Liz is going to take the lead through most of the issue worship.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Before we start, just please note that all applications on the agenda tonight, the notice was given in accordance with the planning act. As noted, the first application is severance consent application B01 2022. The application proposes a lot line adjustment or a lot addition between two existing properties. Approximately 417 square meters, which is approximately 0.103 acres. It's vacant land. It's going to be severed off concession 14 part of lot 10 with frontage on Timber Lane Drive. The severed portion will merge to the adjacent lands to the south, which is also concession 14 part of lot 10. Timber Lane Drive. This lot addition is actually going to provide a driveway access to the subject property off Timber Lane. We did circulate to Neil Allenson, the manager of Roads and Urban Services. His comments were included in the agenda for council's review and consideration. As it's a lot addition, we did not need to circulate to lower Trent at this time, but lower Trent approval will be required prior to the issuance of a building permit. And then the mapping just shows exactly the yellow portion, which is the severed portion. The applicants actually own both properties and both properties would be eligible for a building permit. And it is merging to the property to the south. And that is it for that application, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks Liz very much. Mr. Mascoli, do you have anything to add to this?
Good evening, members of council and staff. Thank you very much for that excellent presentation, Stellman. This is a lot addition that's been precipitated by a building permit application we made for the property. The current driveway actually extends all the way up to Trent River Road and it would be both very expensive and. Require a large number of trees to be cut down on a large driveway to be installed. So I had good advice I received from the municipality staff. We proceed with this application and I hope it finds with your approval.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council?
Here, your worship.
Excuse me?
Bob?
Yes, Gene.
Just to clarify for my own sake, I drove in there the other day and when I got to the turnaround. Then there's a driveway that goes to the east and then it circles and goes to the waterfront. And that's where they're clearing off rocks and, and molars, et cetera, et cetera. That is the site we're talking about, is it?
Through you, your worship. Yes, that is correct. The driveway that goes off to the east presently is for yet another property parcel. And based on the details provided to us by architect, I was suggesting and with planning staff. That it was best to do a straight on driveway down on Timberland Drive, which is the proposals in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good Gene? Okay, anyone else? Is there anyone present tonight wish to speak to this application? Hearing none, we will proceed. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. We're now at severance consent application B02-2022 for Suzanne Cordy. Al is, Al is holding land development corporation, County Road 30, 308 Bridge Street West concession 7 part of lot 8. Former township of Seymour, former town of Campbellford. Liz?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, it's severance consent application B02 2022. This application proposes a lot line adjustment or lot addition between two existing properties. Approximately 0.73 of an acre, which is vacant land. Will be severed from concession 7 part of lot 8, which has frontage on County Road 30. The severed portion is going to merge to the late adjacent lands to the north. Which is 308 Bridge Street West. The lot addition lot line adjustment will provide additional lands to the draft plan. Oh, excuse me, draft plan approved subdivision SB 01 2019, which we are all familiar with. It's the Camelot subdivision. Then it will also provide further frontage on the county road. In the mapping, the big shaded area is the draft plan approved subdivision. We are looking at the small blue crosshatch section on the most westerly lot. Which is the severed portion and it will merge to the draft plan approved subdivision. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks Liz. Is Suzanne Cordy here?
Yeah, it's Chester Stocky.
Oh, yes, Chester, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm acting on behalf of Land Development Corporation, Alziadi Land Development Corporation. And the Camelot Village. So in short, I just want to kind of mention that the land in question is a beautiful side of rolling hills, but. For subdivision purposes, it creates some challenges. And that's why these extra lands will help. This plan were adjusted a number of times to satisfy neighbors and town of Trent Hills. And was a major, major extra cost to the developer. These are not severances nor lot creation. These are lot adjustment boundaries. Remaining new, the lots that are now in existence along the bridge street will be the same length. So the only thing that a land that will be adjusted and. Taken over by the subdivision will help with storm water management. And underground services and sanitary mains. If there is any question, please.
Thanks very much, Chester. Are there any questions from council? Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Jim or Liz, Liz, I guess, is there currently an entrance that comes on the 30 highway here?
Yes, there is. You're talking about from subdivision.
Yeah, there, there's. Yeah, there is, there isn't an entrance on Highway 30 into the subdivision.
Is that right where this lot comes out on?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the existing entrance into the subdivision will be where the current house is at 308 Bridge Street West. This is a vacant lot currently. I don't think there's an existing driveway for it, Rick. It just gives more flexibility to the developer. He has the option of, as you see, and as Mr. Stocky said, adding the rear portion into the subdivision. The front portion could either be developed as an individual house, the way there are houses along there now. Or you could keep it to use it as potential access in the future.
Thanks, Jill.
Anyone else? Are we joined by anyone that would like to comment on this application? Hearing none. We will, we will carry on. We're now at severance consent application B03 2022. For Owen Umble and Tanya Rosen. Again, Alzida Land Development Corporation, 6342 County Road 30. 308 Bridge Street West concession 7 part of lot 8, former township of Seymour, former town Campbellford. Liz?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, it's severance consent application B03 2022. Is a similar application to the last one we just discussed. It is for a lot line adjustment or a lot addition, so not for the creation of a new lot. It's between two existing properties. Approximately 1.08 acres of vacant land is going to be severed from 6342 County Road 30. The severed portion again will merge to the, the adjacent lands to the north, which is the Camelot subdivision. The retained portion does have an existing residential dwelling on it. And as Chester noted, it is the similar size to all the adjacent lots along the county road. And the severed portion is going to provide additional lands to the draft plan approved subdivision. And then similar mapping property to the east. It's the blue crosshatched parcel that is merging to the adjacent lands, which is the proposed subdivision. And the darker blue portion is the retained, which has the existing residential dwelling. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks Liz very much. Anything to add, Chester?
No, it's basically the same as the one before.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Are we joined by anyone that has any questions? Okay, we will. Yes, Gene?
Your worship, just to clarify it, you keep referring to the residence. Is that the Mackenzie farm, the Scott farm, the big brick house? Or another house?
Kathy is nodding your head, yes.
So where is the driveway going to be? That's, that's very steep if you're going down where it is now.
There, there is no driveway. My understanding it's, it's just an addition of land to the. Land that, that the Camelot subdivision will be in. Is that correct, Liz?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Gina's correct. The existing driveway is through the old Mackenzie farm where the existing red brick two-story house still remains and the barns have been removed. There are no existing entrances on the parcels we're addressing tonight, except for the one with the residential dwelling.
Just for a little assistance, Mr. Mayor, we have now received the plans for the new street that will be the access to the subdivision. So we are starting to look at it closely and I'm sure it will be much. Less steep than the current driveway.
Okay. You're going to follow a lot of cars down that road, so. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will move on to the next. Variance. We are now at minor variance application A01 20-2022. For Kathleen Wilkinson and Ken Brock concession road 11 east. Concession 10 part of lot 17, former township of Percy. Liz?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, it's minor variance application A01 2022. For this property, the applicants will be applying to construct a new residential dwelling and accessory, accessory building on the subject property. Which is currently approximately 50 acres of vacant land and it is eligible for a residential building permit. Due to the sloping at the further rear of the property, there is a wetland to the northwest. And we'd like to minimize the impact on the prime agricultural lands. We also need to consider the adjacent barns on the lands to the north as well as to the east. The applicants have applied for the minor variance, which ultimately would reduce that minimum distance separation or the MDS to the adjacent livestock barns. The owners of both livestock barns have provided a written letter of support for the minor variance application. Which would ultimately reduce the setback to both sets of barns to 600 feet. I had cited the relief to the zoning bylaw. The barns to the north had required a setback of 1,000 feet. Which would be reduced to the 600. And the barns to the east had required a setback of 732 feet. And again, it would be reduced to 600 feet. So again, as noted, Dennis McFadden owns the livestock operation or the barns to the north and did, did provide his letter of support. And Ken and Ann Heffernan own the barns to the east and also provided a letter of support. So again, because it's prime agricultural lands. And is eligible for a building permit as it stands, if we had to push back a house 1,000 feet. We'd be looking at going quite the distance back on the property. So reducing it to 600 with the support of the adjacent farmers. Is supported through planning staff. And it just gives you an outline of the property, the McFadden barns to the north and the Heffernan barns to the east. Thank you, Mr.
Thanks Liz. Is Kathleen Wilkinson or Ken Brock with us?
We both are.
Hi there.
Hello.
Do you have anything to add to this application?
Not at this time, no.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions? Seeing none. Gene, do you have a question?
Well, just for my own benefit, I thought the MDS was 750 feet. Has it grown to 1,000 though?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, each MDS is actually unique to the property. We have to use a software program that is provided from OMAFRA. And there's various criteria that we need to input. So it's really based on barn size acreage. Is there manure storage, the type of livestock, or if it's, if it's an unoccupied barn? So based on the criteria that we obtained from the farming operation, each one does come out as a unique setback. There is no set setback.
Thanks. There any questions, other questions to council? Are we joined by anyone that would like to comment on this application? Thank you. We will, we will carry on. We're now at minor variance application A02-2022. For Richard Barnaba, 51 Pine Grove Road concession 11 part of lot 21, former township of Seymour. Liz?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, it's minor variance application A02 2022. The applicant has applied for and received a building permit for a single family residential dwelling in which the construction has commenced. Currently, the residential dwelling does not meet the interior side yard setback for the special rural residential zone. So they have applied for the minor variance, which would acknowledge the reduction in that side yard setback. From what was required is the six meters and it would be reduced down to 3.96 meters. Which is actually how the, the partially constructed house is situated on the property. Unfortunately, our mapping air photos aren't current enough to show the residential dwelling under construction. So we just identified the subject property that are applicable for the minor variance application. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Liz. Is Mr. Barnaba with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Thank you. Do you have anything to add to this?
I think Liz covered it very well.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Thank you. Anyone joining us that would like to comment on this application? Okay, seeing none. We will continue on to minor variance application A03 2022. For Craig and Carol Baxter and John Taylor. 168 Lakeview Drive concession 12 part of lot 13, lot 27. Plan 581, former township of Seymour. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as mentioned, it's minor variance application A03 2022. The applicant has constructed an accessory structure. It's a sauna slash shed and they did receive a building permit through the process. The sauna shed does not meet the minimum required interior side yard setback for accessory buildings. As well, it does not meet the required separation distance between an accessory building and the main building, which is a residential dwelling. So the relief from the zoning bylaw would reduce the side yard setback as well as reduce the setback between the two buildings. They did submit a site plan. It was very challenging to get it to appear on here where it was legible, just based on the size of it. And I would like to note, there are two other structures that actually cross over the lot line and the applicants have already arranged to have them moved in the spring of 2022. Once all this wonderful snow disappears. And the sauna shed building is here. So it doesn't meet the setback to this side lot line. Nor the distance between it and the main residential dwelling. I would like to know, I did have a conversation with the adjacent landowner to the west and they acknowledged that all the concerns are being rectified. And they had no further questions or concerns and didn't submit anything in writing for consideration.
Thank you very much, Liz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are we joined by Craig and Carol Baxter?
Craig Baxter.
Or John Taylor, okay, John?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor Craig. And thank you very much, Liz, for the presentation. My name is John Taylor. I'm a friend of the Baxters. I also happen to be a professional planner. I do work in the greater Toronto area, but I have very close and long ties to the Campbellford area. Two of my sisters live on the Trent and one of them just recently retired from owning and operating the local M&amp;M's in Campbellford. So I've been there for many, many years, over 40 years. Thanks again for the presentation. I do want to note that. The existing shed or garden shed that is being relocated is something that the Baxters inherited. When they purchased the property, that shed was already over the property line. So once Mr. and Mrs. Baxter did the survey, which was recently, it was brought to their attention that there was some infringement on the neighboring property. So this application and the removal and replacement of that shed will bring them into conformity and the Baxters are looking forward to rectifying this issue that they inherited and moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none. Is there anyone joining us that would, that would like to speak to this application? We, we will carry on. We are at proposed purchase of an unopened municipal road allowance for William Ranscombe and Hayden King. Arjun Pandey and Harold Pandey and Rupa Kati Shamar on Wortman Road, road allowance between lots twelve and thirteen and part of the road allowance between concession two and three, former township of Percy. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to turn this one over to the director of planning. He is more familiar with the file than I am.
Thank you. So this is a typical road closing or maybe not so typical. This was an unmaintained road. The municipality actually initiated this a number of years ago and has worked through some different property owners and so the current property owners have reached agreement on division of the closed road in this manner, three portions. One being attached to each adjacent property and then the rights of ways over those portions, which would allow each property owner to have access to their property. And everything's in agreement. We're just finalizing this through the public process and then we can move this forward to to bylaws and legal documents to complete it.
Thank you very much, Jim. Are any of the applicants joining us tonight?
I think they're all present, Mr. Mayor.
And do they have anything to add?
I think just thank you for considering this proposal. It's very nice to see Jim Peters in person after so many emails exchanged. I don't think we had the chance to meet. But this has been, this road has been an ongoing issue for all the homeowners on Wortman Road and we're hoping that this can bring a resolution to the, you know, the safe, safe management of, of the road and the homeowners on the road have a collaborative relationship and will be creating a a standalone maintenance agreement that will cover issues like, like maintenance and access and future use. So there, there are others on the call that can speak for themselves, but I think we're excited to proceed.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we're all excited to see Jim during the pandemic. Thank you for that. Is, is there any questions from council? Rick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Jim, I know we've been down this road before, literally. How far to the north does this go? Right, and I call it Bowens Pond. Jim, I hope you are familiar with that. Does it go right to there?
It goes right to Mr. Ranscombe's property and that's where it ends and it will be his entrance onto his property. Perhaps that pond is, is part of his property.
No, I don't think that's part of my property. Maybe that's off of Banta that you're trying to?
That's right.
Yeah, no, it doesn't go, it doesn't go all the way there. It just goes on a straight line from concession two to the end of Wortman Road. Doesn't do the whole loop around to the pond.
Okay.
Okay.
And also I know that this was an ATV trail, Jim. What's the, what's going on with that then?
Yes, all the property owners are aware of that use and that relationship. And so far, through Mr. Ranscombe, it's been continuing and I don't believe it's an issue.
Yeah, we're, we don't have an issue with sharing the road. We're not, have no intentions to close it down. We just want to be able to maintain it ourselves and share the responsibility of maintenance of it and no longer have it be an unassumed road because that has its own complications in itself. So we have no intention of stopping usage for people walking or ATVing or anything like that.
Okay, and just another follow-up question. I know it's, it's not just ATVs, for example, in the fall. I know they had a, a Dave Downs run that, that part of that, the Bridge House was put on. And I think the runners ran through that old road allowance as well and hopefully they'll be able to continue to do that.
Yeah, for sure.
I think it'll probably be a better trail for them going forward.
Let's talk holes. Yeah, hundred percent. They can reach out to any of us and take it from there, but if there's charity runs or anything, they can continue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Is there anyone joining us on this, for this application that wishes to speak to it? Okay, thank you very much. That concludes the applications for this evening. And at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn at six thirty-five. Moved by Ken? Second by Mike. Do you call a question, please, Doug?
Council Tully?
Yes.
Council Bratney?
Yes.
Council English?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Metcalf?
Yes.
Council Redden?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Carried by six, your worship. If you can give me a moment, I will conclude the stream.
Thanks, everyone.